Welcome.
Whatever you're doing, I know.
All right, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Thursday, June 2, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction to board members. To the far left, we have Paul Immatucci and Dave Endreson, myself, Michael Aru. We have Phil Roy and alternate member Matt Henry. Matt, you're going to be a voting member today. Next is the first public comment. Oh, sorry, sorry. Forgot Tammy, the town planner, and Jen McCabe, the code enforcement officer. Also, I'm sorry.
So that's all right.
And now, back to the first public comment. Okay, seeing no one coming forwards, no public hearings, approval of minutes for May 19, 2022.
I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes for the May 19, 2022 meeting.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
I'm staying.
Okay. So that was four yeses and one abstain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, full business. Second Amendment to Richard Demarest, approved subdivision by Les Bodwell, AKA Navina Acres LLC, tax map R44, lot 21-5, main DEP permits and signed site plan.
And the site plan is right over there. You need to sign all of the pages. There are three copies with three pages each for each section. So you do need to make a motion for that. And do you want to do the main DEP information first?
Yes, let's do that first and then sign it.
Jay is here representing Navina Acres. If you want to ask any questions of him. It might be easier if you go to the podium, just in case.
I'm waiting for a question.
Oh.
I can go to the board.
Is this for the stormwater walk we did last meeting? This is for the walk or no?
This is for Les's, uh...
Halflinger Lane.
This is for Halflinger Lane.
Double G Apartments.
Okay, okay.
This is the other one.
Yeah, too many irons in the fire.
This is the extension.
This is off the side.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, my name's, I guess for the record and viewers, my name's Jay Stevens. I'm with Civil Consultants and I am representing Les tonight at this meeting for signing of the plans. The DEP approval came through a couple of weeks ago, or last, within the last two weeks. And I got a copy to Tammy so that she's got the multi-page approvals and so forth. One of the things that she had commented on was the DEP fees. And one of the things we found out, because we haven't had a project of this magnitude in quite a while, is that the Army Corps and the DEP work together on coming up with a fee. The DEP comes up with a fee, the Army Corps comes up with a fee, whosoever fee is bigger is the fee that we have to pay. The Army Corps won this time, little over $92,000. That fee has been submitted and we, again, sent a copy of the check and the return receipt, sending it to, I guess it goes to Augusta somewhere. I don't know what they do with it. Goes to an In-Lu-Of Fund of some kind.
Yeah, and he did provide the proof.
The DEP approval did not change any of the information that was on the plan set that you had. All of the buffers remain the same. They will all be marked in the field before Les goes out there to be sure they remain undisturbed. We were just waiting for the DEP agreement that that's what the buffers would ultimately be before we went out, put up the placards and dashed them to the trees. So that will be probably the next step is those placards will be mounted.
Question?
Thank you.
But if anybody has any questions?
Bless you.
Sorry.
So what are we voting on tonight?
Just signing the...
Signing the plans.
Okay.
But I do have, I wrote based on the main DEP department order that came back, under number two stormwater standards, it does say in A, Section 1, that this plan and plan sheets containing erosion control details were reviewed by and revised in response to the comments of the Bureau of Land Resources. If they did make comments on the revision, we do need a copy of that for the file.
No, these were the revised plans.
Okay, those were?
Yeah, the revisions, what they were originally asking for, came through before our last submission.
Okay.
And we've just been waiting this long for them to agree that those changes were acceptable. So no, nothing changed from the plan set that you have.
Super. The logs for the inspections, especially during construction, the pre and post inspections that you have to do, once a storm happens, can you just shoot them over? Have them shoot a copy? He can scan them and just send them over to me. They don't have to be any formal letter or anything with it. Because it did say that, because it's a mitigation process that they're trying to go through, I want to be able to support that, yes, you did what you needed to do should anything come up from it.
I will note that this should get copies of those to you when he does those, when he performs those checks.
Yeah, that would be great. And I did provide to Jay a copy of my planner memo that was done. So it does make other comments about recording copies to the town for like the deed restrictions and things like that. So hopefully, when he does them and if he doesn't assign it to a lot, it's a general deed restriction, then those will still come over. Once he sells a piece of property, the deed will come over anyways to the assessor and it usually goes into the parcel file. But I really want to try and keep everything together for the subdivision so they, should they decide to want to do added ones, change them, something different, we have everything all together and it's not, okay, where do we need to find this? So, and then, yeah, I just wanted to confirm that we got the In-Lu fee, so...
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
You.
Just trying to wrap my head around the verbiage on the, on the last page where it is signed by the commissioner. It says, "It does not verify compliance with any applicable shoreland zoning ordinance." Is that...
It's because they're not in the shore land.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
They might have wetlands, but it's not considered a shore land because it's no...
It doesn't connect to the salmon falls or dump into the ocean, then?
It's too far away for it to be even...
Roger that. Got it.
Considered for that.
All right. So we're looking for a motion for completeness? Is that what we're...
No, to sign the plans.
Signing the plans.
All right. You want to make that motion?
To sign the pla, fight it complete or?
No, to sign.
Oh, to sign it? Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, find it complete and make a motion to sign the plans.
I will second the motion to sign the plans.
All right.
That's, that's a new one for me.
All right, further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Lots of sign. And then today's date?
Please.
Go that way. I borrow your pen, please. Thank you.
You'll need to sign like nine times.
Yeah.
I have another pen over here, too, if anyone needs one.
Oh, okay.
Yep, right here.
There's, the reason there's so many plans is because there's the subdivision plan and then there's all the two different sets of buffer plans, which are essentially little surveys. So they can be referenced now easily in the deets.
Yeah, I got two I haven't done yet on the bottom, so... They're too fast for me. I don't think it matters. Well, is he...
So at that point, he wasn't a member for the voting of the completeness of this, so now let's, let's...
Okay, keep it.
You'll get the next one. He's got another one coming through, so...
Last those?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Close.
No.
Another out of the way?
Are you talking about me over there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I, you know me, I would just tell you.
You're right, you would.
Yeah, but no. We'll tell you after. It's funny.
Are you going to take one or two with you this time?
I thought you wanted to take two, so...
Well, I did, but...
I'm only going to take them.
Okay.
Tomorrow, someone will be taking four of them. Or maybe Monday.
Monday.
I was going to say, that's fast. Great service.
Yeah, it's what, three pages? Yeah. So Mike's got a blank if you want to check for the complete site.
I think he's putting together as he's...
Oh, as he's doing.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that far. I'm trying. This one, it's three pages, right?
Yeah.
This one's also, you want to take that?
I have your rubber band if you want it.
Thank you.
Might be nice.
Well, since they only take the paper ones now, they sprinkle a little more than the old MyLiners did.
Yes. Yeah, but the MyLiners get so brittle.
Want me to get those others and just bring them over for you?
No, I'll have them leave them on the desk so they stay flat.
Oh, so you get to keep the flat ones, huh?
That way I'll roll them up at the end of the meeting.
All right, so that's that. Now to new business. Aspen Power Partners, Main One Sophie's Way LLC, tax map R67, lot 1-2, request for construction, extension and surety bond.
Hey, everyone. Tiffany Chase, Aspen Power Partners. We're requesting a 12-month extension to the 50% completed construction by August 5th. Procuring the mechanical equipment with the supply chain issues is taking longer than we originally anticipated for not just us, but most people. So we're requesting the 12-month extension. And then also, we obtained the decommissioning plan bond in the name of the town.
Will you issue up with that? The abutters on that dirt road, they're going to be doing construction during the wet season. Doing the extension. Does that condition that we can do?
I don't think so. I think this is just, because they've already got approved, this is just an extension.
They have, okay.
They've already, they already have their conditions and...
Okay, was, we did put conditions in for road maintenance on that one, correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to look it up specifically.
The condition was that we have to return it to the condition it was prior to when we started construction.
And they did provide pictures.
There's two abutters on that road, if I'm not mistaken.
There is, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's right.
I just want to make sure we're not tearing their road up.
I was on it today. It still looked pretty good.
Okay.
And then that road will be prepped at the next stage of construction. Right now, they were just working on tree removal because we had to get that done before they, June 1st was they shut it down for the bats. We can't do until, for June and July, we couldn't cut trees. So we just got the trees cut so we could meet that deadline.
All right. Excellent.
So what they're looking for is similar to the other one you did with the extension of 12 months. What, and if the board agrees by motion, I'll then type up the letter, just like we sent to the other company, and I'll do it exactly the same way, except change the names and the dates. Mike will come in, sign and attest it, sign the letter. I'll get it out to them because they do have to record it. And then it has to be attested because it's crossing state lines. So that way it makes it extremely official that way.
Then I would like to make a motion that we...
Have a good night.
We're at the 12-month extension.
I will second said motion.
Thank you, Jay.
Further discussion?
It just, and you're saying that the actual reason for this is supply chain issues?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Yep.
That's it? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, Phil was, did you second or did you not?
I did.
You did? Okay. So Tiffany, I'll do the letter up. I'll have Mike come in. I'll attest it and everything and then send you a hard copy. I'll also scan it and send you an email with it.
That sounds perfect.
So that way it's easier to get recorded that way.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on. Planning Board Review Letter for Community Development Block Grant 2022 Community Enterprise Assistance Grant.
Would you like me to go to the podium on this?
You can just say it right there, that's fine.
Go to the podium.
I think she'd rather go to the podium.
Okay.
No, I, Jenny wants to go to the podium. This way I can test out the, everything else and make sure they can hear me better. JCS 16 LLC, that's doing all the construction and did the first set of buildings over on the Edge, was able to get a grant for $75,000 for the facade, the front facade, so the Sullivan Street side of the building will be assisted with helping them to get a portion of that cost. They're running into supply chain issues, as are a lot of people. So we had to do a quick submission for the grant so they could still get the approval back in time to be able to place the order and hopefully have it before August when they hope to open up in the new building. So this grant, as part of their Phase 2 processing, has to have a letter from the Planning Board stating they are in compliance with the comp plan and the site plan review and the other ordinances that you approved them for with their site plan review and conditional use. So when I went through it, I also provided you with a copy of the application so that you could take and see exactly what they wanted to do. And in all honesty, they've done the majority of the legwork on this grant. I'm here doing what they can't do. So they're really working hard to make sure this grant happens for them. It will help everybody around. It will keep everything on schedule, we're hoping, and the state thinks it's a great idea. So the state is the one that does the community grants. There will be a public hearing with the Board of Selectmen on the 15th regarding this grant so that if anybody from the community has any questions on it, they can come in at that point and ask the questions. But it's, we need to notify people that they were awarded it. So, and then this is our portion as part of the Planning Board to take and approve that, yes, they are in compliance with the Planning Board's rules and regs. Any questions?
We've already approved everything having to do with that building in the Edge.
Right, and so basically, what they said when you approved it is the facade they're looking to get.
Perfect.
So...
So there's no substantive changes to...
Not yet.
The look, color, shape?
Nope.
Okay.
We don't, we don't project there will be.
Okay.
No, not much. She's keeping it basic white, so that way, you know, if we go the olive green or something, there might be a little delay in getting it, but she's going to keep it the white and then use accent colors with it to make it look really sharp and impressive. So... So to keep Mike out of hot water, because he has to sign this, if somebody wouldn't mind making a motion, that way it covers him signing this document.
Can I just, to make sure I understand fully, it was a state grant that was granted for the frontal facade of the building?
Own.
And they need our approval to move forward with that?
Correct.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Motion to sign. Cool, thank you, gentlemen. Sounds like Mike's going to be busy.
Yes.
The what?
I said you're going to be busy signing.
I just signed it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
It's done. No, that's not the official...
Oh.
That's only, if it's got staple marks.
I'll be back Monday or Tuesday to sign for Les's stuff, so... The next is the second public comment. No one's on here.
No, you don't have a, oh, yes, we do, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong paper. Sorry, guys.
We have more stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to close that public comment. Next is informational items. First one is House of Hope Recreational Center, 25 Sawmill Hill, tax map U1, lot 14, findings of fact, update document.
As part of their approval, you had requested that they get a letter stating that they will not put any structures between the new building and the old building. I believe it's the pantry that it's going up next to. So the treasurer for the House of Hope signed a letter stating that they will not put any structures in that area. If they opt to, they have to come back to get the town consent on it. So this way, we keep the, the fire chief. His requests are upheld that way. And the reason it's under informational items is because you don't really have to do anything with it. It's just so that it's at the meeting, people know it came in, and it can be added to their packet.
Great. Awesome, thank you. All right, moving on, we have the Preserve at Rolling Meadows, tax map R45, lot 39, Providential Equity Development LLC, Mike Sudak, Atar Engineering LLC, complete traffic impact study.
And Mike is on Zoom. Evening, Mike.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I can, I can take the lead here, Tammy.
Thank you.
This one's, no problem, sorry, I can't see you. So yeah, this application, we're kind of in the, just a quick recap, we're kind of in the nebulous space between preliminary approval and final application submittal. All that I'm here for tonight is, if you remember the last meeting, that was before you guys, to talk about the traffic impact analysis that was completed for this project. Somehow you guys wound up with every other page, so we couldn't discuss it as substantially as maybe some of the Planning Board members wanted to. So now that that's in your hand, I'd be happy to take any questions you have on it. Yeah, that's really all I've, I've got to say. I can entertain anything you guys have got.
Does anybody have any questions? And I did compare, I know this is going to sound silly, but I did compare the recommendations page from the previous one to this one, and they're the same ones, so...
Yeah.
Yep.
No, I don't see any reason to...
Okay, no other questions?
No.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, I'll see you for final.
All right.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, so next is handouts for upcoming Planning Board application reviews.
Yes, you will find in your paperclip packet four applications. The first one is for a subdivision that did not get recorded. So they're coming back to the Planning Board, requesting that the Planning Board reapprove it so they can then get it recorded. They just, it was the start of the pandemic. If you read the cover letter with it, it's a great explanation. I went back, I checked all the documents. I felt like I needed to get a little microscope to make sure everything remained the same. They put a new signature block on it for the Planning Board. So the findings of fact is still in here. So I will take and write a planner memo for the next meeting and you'll have it before then, so you'll know whether or not we have to have the public hearing or not. But with the applicants not being here tonight, we really can't, I'm not going to, right, say much about it.
Right.
So it will be a little unique in the fact that it happened at the very beginning of the pandemic when everything became shut down. So I did double-check dates on it to make sure that the information was correct, so...
I could blame this on the old town planner. Currently the town manager.
No. You know, in all honesty, I don't remember how I handled the first part of the pandemic, how we got everything done that we needed to get done in the prior town. It was like, really, what did we do? How did we do that? Because I know the county courthouse got shut down for so long. They weren't even taking in mail and then they'd let it sit.
We ran a lot of meetings online from home. That was, that was very, very difficult, especially for me.
You had an internet problem, didn't you?
Yes.
I remember you like having to be like, excuse me for a second.
And then the call took over because I'm just, I just went off. I went off the air.
I remember that.
I just couldn't, you know, and then I ended up going down to my basement, right next to the router, and running a meeting. But yeah, I tried doing it upstairs, first floor, and then the basement. Yeah, it was difficult. Let's hope we never have to go there again.
Yes, exactly. And the other three packets are for the three first units going in to the L-shaped building across the street that they're currently working on. So those I will also have for the next meeting. And the applicants will all be in person. Would you like JCS also here? I hadn't even thought to ask Julie if she wanted to be here on them, but I can request it if you would like her to be.
I don't think so. I mean, just as long as the applicant's here.
Correct. Yeah, and they all know they've got to come in.
Yeah, just as long as they're here and we can vote on it, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think you have to have anybody else.
Okay, super. Makes my job easier.
Yeah. That's, that's what we're all about. Make your job easier.
If you were ever here with Mike one day, I think there were five people that walked in right behind him, coming in to talk to me, and it's like, oh, my word.
Right, right.
Yeah. I think Mike got out over an hour later.
Yeah.
And he was there to sign.
Yeah, I was just there to sign.
So...
Okay.
Yeah, if we can streamline it, Dave, that's really what I want to do.
Yep.
So...
Absolutely.
And if people, when going through these other conditional uses, if you guys have suggestions that would fall into compliance with our, or our land use ordinance, I'm more than willing to listen to how you want to do them. Because if we can streamline it, because we've got another 27 potential businesses coming in over there...
Would we be served and should we develop a checklist? Just so we're apples to apples, every business that comes through, and it can be, you know, a fluid document, you know, because like, for instance, with the solar issue, we got smart, smarter as we went along with that. But should we have a checklist for completion and, just so we have a standardized process?
Well, you have your ordinance.
Right.
But what part of that ordinance won't these groups have to be with? Because the entire, almost eight acres, has a conditional use and site plan approval already.
Okay.
So whether or not, with this one being four units that are coming in out of potentially, I think it's six, depending on what goes in the back part, you may want to try and do a checklist. If somebody wants to start it, I'd gladly add to it, generate it, and have everybody look at it to see, okay, let's do this, let's change this, let's... Because if I had time to do all the checklists we should have...
Just to keep it fair and equitable for future applicants.
Right.
There might be value added there. I don't know, I'm just spitballing ideas.
Especially for that site.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I do take each conditional use, I take it back to the ordinance and start going down through it. And you'll see that when you get my memo, because all of those, it's something 9A through L or A through J. I go through and I write them all in and answer them the best I can, so that if you see something I didn't see, we can change it and put it on the findings of facts accordingly.
Yeah, Tammy, I think that you're doing a fantastic job. Man, I've been on the planning board a long time, three town managers and three town planners, and you're doing a fantastic job. You're not missing a single beat. As a matter of fact, sometimes I'm like, really? Is she really going to do this? But you're, you're doing the right thing. You're doing the right thing. You are definitely. So, you know, good job.
Thank you, sir, very much. So there's nothing that has to be discussed with those tonight? It's just for you to review prior to the next meeting?
Yeah, it appears that 12 Sullivan is the new building across the street that we just are getting the $75,000 facade in.
Correct.
So it looks like they have three or four tenants all ready to go in.
Potential.
Right? So that's nice to, that's nice to see. Really nice to see.
That is.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one more thing, and that's to discuss the July 7th optional planning board meeting we have. I'm not going to be around for that meeting, so I'm going to suggest that we don't, we skip that meeting unless anyone else has other ideas, but...
I don't mind running that meeting, but, you know, I know that right now, that this is, this is a pretty light, you know, light agenda, and I know we had a light agenda the week before, or two weeks before. How are we going to look if we skip a meeting?
With the applicants you have before you, your next meeting will be big, and if you find these complete, when the applicants are here next week at the next meeting, they won't have their public hearing and/or site watch until the second meeting in July. So you've got four that are going to move, if they are deemed complete, to the second meeting in July.
So the first meeting in July...
Is, right now, I have the minutes from tonight.
Okay.
And I already know that the Preserve is not coming back before us anytime soon because they wanted to see if they can't get some of main DEP permits in there first before they start doing anything, kind of like what Halflinger did, where if they have to change it, they'd rather change it before they come to you for the final application. So I know that one, and also the one lot for Double G that Phil, you mentioned earlier at the meeting, they contacted me and they aren't going to come until they have final answers, and they'll come as a combination because it's one lot, preliminary and final, which you can do even on a regular subdivision, but with it being one lot, I said it'll ultimately be up to the planning board if they want to approve both on the same note.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with not having the meeting, the first meeting in July, but let's just, we got a couple of weeks that we can really look and see the schedule, and in case something pops up that's major that we need to have a meeting, I'm fine with not having the meeting.
That, the first meeting in July and the second meeting in December in your bylaws, you can take off without any recourse.
Right.
Yeah. Because I know last year, when you said December, you wanted to have the meeting and everybody here was able to be here, I had to scurry to get a quorum that night.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be that our second meeting in July is like, you know, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night.
No, I, I won't do that to you again. I can't do it to me again, so...
Thank you.
No.
And just in the interest expectation management, those applicants that are going in across the way, I assume by us not having that, the complete, estimated completion and occupancy date, is that far enough out that we're not hurting the applicants? It is?
Yeah. When you get my memo for the next meeting on those that were handed out tonight for you to review, from where they're sitting even right now, they are like 95% complete.
Okay.
Did you, have you talked to them about, or do you want to wait on the verbiage about no new business after 9:00?
No, I haven't even talked to them about that yet.
Okay, so you haven't talked to Mike?
Nope, not yet.
All right.
Nope.
Please hold. Sorry.
It was a, a meeting we attended, and that was on their agenda, and I think it's a nice idea.
They don't know what I said.
Yeah. We'll discuss it at another meeting.
Yeah, Mike, I encourage you to schedule when you come in next week, maybe schedule to be there for like an hour so we can like...
Okay.
Meet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll bounce it off you, and then we'll schedule it on the agenda.
So you guys, you guys are a little bit in the dark, so let me just tell you what, what we're thinking about doing. There's some verbiage at the end of another planning board meeting that we attended that says no new business starts after 9:00 PM on the bottom of there.
So it's automatically tabled until the next...
Don't get excited, we're going to talk to you about it. But it just, it, you know, no good things happen after, you know, two, three hours of a meeting like that, so...
And with as difficult as some of the applications are that are coming before you, you need to have a clear head when you're looking at them to make sure you're not confusing one application like I did this week, saying, yeah, Jenny had a good laugh in that one.
We're good.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just have something that does not concern that, and I do know that there's been some conversation, at least that I've heard, about tiny homes. And I know that, you know, we do have guidelines for ADUs, you know, mother-in-laws and that sort of thing. Tiny homes are a little bit different. So I think, I had sent an email to Tammy earlier, and she had said maybe it'd be a good idea if we had a little workshop on that.
Sure.
To kind of develop some thoughts about what we do before, they're before us, and we have no definite...
It's not, it's not treated, I think it's a great idea, but it's, because it's listed as a code, it's in the IRC and IBC books for 2018, that's what we would go by too. But it's no different than like an ADU or a single-family home. The only problem with tiny homes is we have an ordinance that says that our smallest apartment, house, whatnot, has to be 400 square feet. And they find it difficult to meet that with a tiny home. However, it doesn't look like we're going to be changing that anytime soon. So, but if you want to have a workshop, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's a self-resolving issue, is what I'm, I'm hearing you say.
It is and it isn't. So if I wanted to put, I don't know if you want to just talk about it real quick, but if I wanted to put an ADU in my backyard and I was going to put up, because it can be attached or detached with ADUs, ADUs just for people at home is accessory dwelling unit. It's like having an apartment or...
It's a mother-in-law. That's what it is. Used to call it a mother-in-law.
Yeah, and now it's accessory dwelling unit because you can rent it out to people you don't know. So that's why they changed the verbiage on that. But basically, what it is, is ADUs are detached or attached, they can't be more than 50% of the main living area of the main house on site. So if your house is 3,000 square feet, you can build a 1,500 square foot ADU. If your house is 1,500 square feet, you can build a 750 square foot ADU. So that's where the tiny homes kind of come into play. And I will tell you that there could be one, I won't give away too much, but there could be one coming into Berwick that meets the 400 square foot, barely, but it meets it. They're really nice inside, but there's some life safety issues that are also like intertwined with it. But, yeah, we could have a workshop.
Yeah, and there's, you know, the other issues about, you know, water and sewer, and are they going to be connected or going to have well on septic? And, and because most of these tiny homes are mobile, they're on wheels, I mean, you know, if you get a mobile home, yes, it comes on wheels and it has a chassis, but it's there forever once they put it down, most times. But on a tiny home, they can hook that sucker up pretty quick, collapse it up, and away they go. So the connections for well on septic in most places where they're having tiny homes, what we're seeing are not unique pieces of property, but tiny home parks. And I think we have to discuss that, too, about, about parks. Because we have a lot of land in this town, and...
You're saying you don't want tiny home trailer parks?
I'm not saying I don't want it. I, I may want it more than I want solar panels. So, but, but I think we ought to get our arms around it before it happens, and then we're scrambling. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it does fall under the same kind of as a single-family home, though, so it would have to be all the requirements of that.
Right, right.
So it would have to be hooked up to town sewer and water.
Which kind of excludes them, particularly if they're going to pull in well on septic, they need two acres.
Sort of, but you, you would be surprised on what some of these look like inside. Some of them are nicer than...
Oh, they're fantastic.
Our houses, you know? So, yeah. I do foresee in the next five years of somebody coming to the planning board to do that.
Yeah.
It's becoming a big, people are...
I see that, too.
Buying RVs, selling all their stuff, traveling. That's my dream, so...
So if...
Just kidding, I'm not going anywhere.
So could someone use a tiny home as an ADU?
Yes. As long as it meets 400 square feet.
Okay.
We cannot tell them no.
Okay.
They, they would still have to meet the...
ADU standards.
The main property would have to meet the requirement for septic and, and whatnot, correct? Or...
Town sewer and water, yeah. A lot of the, a lot of the tiny homes get hooked up with a hose and a, a extension cord. That's how they run them.
Yep.
They're actually, I think they're really cool.
So do I.
I think it's so cool, and if you've never been in one, I encourage you to do so. They're really neat. But there's like all kinds of stuff, like the loft has to be five feet any direction you pull a tape, like there's, there's some real like, you know...
And with, you know, prices skyrocketing in the real estate market, you know, houses that you wouldn't even look at now are selling for $400,000 in this town. So, so I'm just, you know, concerned that, you know, at some point, people are going to say, for $50,000, I can buy a tiny home and put it on a piece of property in Berwick. So I just don't want it to happen all of a sudden for us.
Yep.
Yep. Honey.
Okay.
That's it.
Any further informational items?
I have nothing.
Well, you had another one. You wanted to say it, the car show?
Ah, yes. All those out in TV land. The, on Sunday, between 8:00 and 2:00, there is the Berwick Car Show sponsored by the American Legion Post 79, and last year, we had, I think, 168 cars, and we're probably going to get the same or more this year. It's also supposed to be a gorgeous day. So there'll be music, there'll be food, and there'll be some fantastic cars, a lot of trophies, T-shirts, the whole thing. So it's a great day. Please come out.
Yep.
Neat.
If there are no further items for consideration from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Berwick Town Hall, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you.
I thought the new voted adjourned.
The what?